This is a work session, and this is Thursday, September 3rd. What kind of table we have?
Good evening.
Daphne West.
Larry Patterson, City Manager.
Phil Kepesman, City Attorney.
Nancy Crouch, Public Works.
James Nasty, City Commissioner.
Rocky Smith, Commissioner.
William Decker.
Kelly Wrigley.
Erin Moore.
Jim Lotter.
David Wimmer, President.
Warren Cole, Attorney General.
Thank you very much. Could we jump into the discussion items in the interest of time? And of course, you have an opportunity to add future items to the agenda at any time. But if I could indulge, because we have our attorney here, and we run over all the meeting. So, Bill, would you talk to us a little bit about water rates?
Sure. Do you want to?
I'll just do a quick introduction. In 1996, Oregon City raised its water rates about 60 percent. 1995, 1996, about 60 percent because we needed to raise our rates. And there was a -- since it was such a dramatic rate increase, the citizens of Oregon City formed a group that later put an initiative on the ballot that said that the rates needed to be rolled back to the rates they were before the rate increase, and that by charter they can only be increased by 3 percent a year by the city commission without a vote of the people. And we have recently or at some point taken out bonds to pay for the Hulka Mobile Park Place water system, which included the Barlow Crest Reservoir, Hunter Street Pump Station, many, many pipelines. And when something happened where bond found -- the bond people found out that, you know, we had this huge restriction on what we could pay them, and they sued the city, took us to court, and said, "You can't limit your water rates like that, people of Oregon City, because you have an obligation to pay back these bonds." And it went through fairly lengthy court process. David Wimmer was directly involved in it. There was a lot of activity in the city, and the final decision was that until the bonds are paid off, you have to keep your water rates high enough to pay the bonds. And because of this issue, you can only raise it 3 percent a year because the charter had been changed. And then when the bonds go away, we're trying to figure out what to do with the water rates. Do they get rolled back to pre-1996 levels? And -- or what kind of 3 percent applies? And so even though 2014 is when the bonds will be paid off, in our world of government, five years is not very long. And in running a water utility, which is a tremendous responsibility for the city, we need to make sure that we're not caught in a situation where we cannot provide reliable, safe water to our community. So we thought it'd be prudent to start looking at this issue now, so that depending on what courses we need to follow, we can be prepared to not just continue a responsible water utility service. So, Bill, you can take it from there.
Yeah, and that's a great summary. And the basic point is that we don't know where the water rates are going to end up at the end of 2014 when these bond measures expire. The court ruling in 1996, you know, I'll read you the conclusion. "I hereby declare that Measure 365 is unconstitutional as to the existing 1991, 93, and 94 water bonds because it violates Contract Clause of the U.S. Constitution. However, I also hold that Measure 365 is valid prospectively with regard to any future bonds Oregon City may issue." And, you know, seems relatively straightforward. And you read the ballot measure that they passed, it seems relatively straightforward also. You know, "Upon passage of this amendment, the water rates shall be those in effect on October 31, 1994. The commission may not increase water rates more -- by more than 3 percent annually without a vote of the people." But the fallout of it is not very clear. We've had some discussions with the city's bond council as well. You know, one of the important things, if you're trying to sell bonds in the market, is, you know, bond buyers need certainty. They need to know that the money's going to be paid back. And if there's some uncertainty about what's happening with the rates, you're not going to be able to sell bonds. And that means you're, you know, you're not going to be able to operate.
If I might ask, we have to go to the people who are borrowing anyway.
Right. Yeah, any bonds you're going to go to, you got to get a vote of the people anyway. But also in terms of planning for the future of the water system, you've got to know what rates you can charge, and, you know, if in fact there is a rollback to 94, what that means. You know, and the critical question is, what does it mean when he said it's unconstitutional as to the existing 91, 93, and 94 water bonds? You know, there's a fairly decent argument that when something's unconstitutional, it's unconstitutional. It can't be constitutional one day and then unconstitutional the next day. But he specifically -- the judge specifically tied it to these particular bonds. And when those bonds expire, does that mean it rolls back to 94? And it's not very clear. And it wasn't clarified then. So when Nancy brought this forward, and, you know, we started thinking, what do we have to do? How do we deal with this? There are a couple of different options that sort of present themselves, and there are a variety of other things as well. The first option is to go to the court and ask for a declaratory judgment. How does this -- how should we read this? And there's a provision in, I think it's RS 234, that allows governments to essentially validate their actions. And so we can get that and, you know, inform the people who are involved. People Against Raising Henceman is actually the name of the group that got this -- the bond measure passed back in 94. And, you know, they may well want to intervene and make their understanding of what they thought they passed in 96. But that's one option. It gives us a clear answer, and we know what we're dealing with moving forward. Another option that the commission may want to consider is to put an initiative in front of the -- or I guess not initiative, but measure in front of voters, asking them to take, you know, to ratify our interpretation or take some certain steps. Do that -- there's a variety of different things you can do in terms of, you know, do you want to keep the rate limitation in place, but clarify what the rates in effect are? A number of different options that you have there. One of the issues with that is if in fact it's voted down, you're not in any better place than you were before. But if you do clarify and it's approved, you know, then you may have some additional flexibility or depending on what you put in front of voters. So I think at this point, what we're really looking for is some direction as to what your thoughts are on water rates and what course the city ought to pursue to deal with the ambiguities here.
What's the cost of getting the declaratory judgment?
I would guess, you know, and as with any litigation, it's a guess, depending on who gets involved and what happens. But, you know, there really aren't difficult facts. It's really, you know, it's not a matter of getting witnesses on. It's not a matter of, you know, discovery. So it should be relatively cheap. You know, I would say fifteen to twenty thousand dollars is a rough guess for litigation.
It's a question we need to know the answer to.
I think that's a really good idea.
Let me ask you a couple of specific questions. Periodically, we've raised 3 percent. We have not done it in all years. The 3 percent, first of all, the reason for the dramatic increase, as I recall, was for, in fact, those bond measures, wasn't it?
Yes.
And so when we've been raising it 3 percent, have we been raising it 3 percent on the whole water rate or just the portion minus the bond?
We've been raising it on the whole water rate.
Okay. I guess, and I guess I made this comment before, if we took a look at taking the 1994 amount and then arguing that we could apply 3 percent annually to each one of those shares as opposed just to the years that we did so, recognizing we're getting additional money from 3 percent on the bonds too, where that would put us? I think that's information we would need to know. I don't know if you've looked at that yet.
I have.
And what -- where does that put us in terms of the actual water service?
Well, I actually looked at it to January 2010.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, good. So what we're -- what our rates is now, this doesn't include the -- well, there's the administrative rate plus the usage rate. And we can actually look at the administrative rate for simplicity. But it is -- in January 2010, it'll be $12.68 per month. And then in addition to that, David, what is our per hundred cubic foot today?
$2.06.
$2.06, okay.
$32.91.
And if we had increased by 3 percent without the 60 percent increase, we would be at $9.92 and $1.65. So it's about 25 percent or so less.
Well, could we -- could that happen, and then we can't raise it above 3 percent, and could we make up for it once the bonds are paid for?
I think you're stuck with 3 percent.
You're stuck with 3 percent?
It's pretty clear from the judgment that 3 percent survived.
And I don't think we're really trying to solve the problem is what are we going to do about water rates right now? Because we don't -- it takes a fair amount of analysis of what are our needs. We want to make sure we have a rate that's based on need and service delivery. So I think more what we're interested in doing is clarifying our legal situation, and so that we can then know, do we -- what's step one on figuring out what kind of a water rate do we need? Are we meeting our needs or not? So there are lots of alternatives, but I think first of all, we need to figure out exactly what is our situation.
Okay, going to the ballot, it's not the $30,000 is about what we should vote for for an election.
Yeah, depends on.
Depends on when we go.
I mean, you know, you go to the ballot, and the question is, of course, you're offering water services, but if we're going to go to the ballot, I would argue that that's maybe the time we ought to look at a conservation program. That is, you mentioned yourself, you could use the winter rates, for example, the non- irrigation period for perhaps establish some kind of base based on that. And then the additional, in terms of the ballot measure, I don't know how you word it, maybe somewhat complicated, but take the conservation piece into account. Those people who are being conservative may not end up paying any more than the equivalent of $12.68 at that point in time, those that are being --
I get it, yeah.
Yeah, so if it can be done with some -- there's something I can do about it, you know? I can use less water, you know? Or something of that nature, and they're dealt with in that manner.
I agree. I think we talked about having a presentation on tiered rates. I think that would be good education for us. I'd love to hear that. Because I know that there are a number of cities and colleges that are doing that now. But I would like to pursue what court says about it, so that we kind of know the --
What are -- what do we need to do? And it's not clear to me.
I think we need to.
What are position -- you know, what are -- what's our legal obligation?
Right, because then we may divide -- define a whole new way to start over, but.
I think I heard Larry say on numerous occasions, our water fund is one of our better funds. Is that true?
Well, we have a contingency in it, but it's also we have a reservoir to build. We've got -- there's a master plan.
Better relative.
Yeah. Right, but Larry helped me. We have a capital improvement program that's going to require us to construct large capital projects in the future. And so you have to really track -- you have to keep track of it over the future years. And while you might be carrying a contingency now, that will be used in the future too. And our contingency isn't large.
If we do a conservation plan on water, we also want to consider that the cost shorts.
Well, I think that'd be great, yeah. I think they kind of go hand in hand, but so the benefit, somebody's conserving water, they get the benefit of their sewer rate going down as well.
Unless we say they can only go to the bathroom every other day.
Even number of days, yeah.
Well, it goes without saying that if you -- except for the -- I think what Dick's getting at is really at the irrigation, use of irrigation water in the summertime, and how you can really control that.
I mean, not only conservation, but just about the fairness question, tiering pricing for sewer service. As one individual, I pay the same rate as a family of five.
And when you get into tiering, you know, with the limitation of 3 percent increases, you know, you may run into problems there. And so, you know, I think it would have to be a comprehensive look at how to do that through a tiering.
Does anybody do tiered on the stormwater?
On sanitary sewer?
Yeah.
David, do you know if other communities do tiered? I think there are.
I think some of them have meters, like on commercial or something.
Not on residential, though?
I can't think of any, but that doesn't mean that there aren't any.
I can look into that for you, Commissioner.
I mean, what I have seen is, you know, tiering where the sewer rate depended on water usage.
Right.
Yeah, and that's -- it's a derivative. It's not separate.
The problem with on residential, sometimes you go in there, businesses, you go there.
Yeah. A lot of different approaches with irrigation ways.
So do you have enough marching orders?
Did we get a nod around?
Yeah, I think you did.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll talk.
Bring us back to more info.
And before we do anything, we should know what we're doing.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Other issue is the clock is ticking on the CHP issue, and we need to begin to figure out what we're going to take. We did a walk-through of facilities over at the EOP today, just to kind of look at.
The letter from last night. Do you have it? I want to see that.
We did a walk-around this morning. These are the -- here, here.
You can give us one.
That's your original letter. Actual original.
Yeah, but here's the report came in. But not that, no, no.
I put this together after our walk-around this morning. And the top four things are the things that we -- I think they're indisputable, I mean, they might be. But anyway, they -- as per the contract and their notice, we kind of agreed that they would close their doors. Actually, what we said was as late as possible. It turned out to be October 10th or 11th. I don't know if that date's meant that one's a Saturday or Sunday or something. And then, we -- it's ours. So the second thing then that we need to be aware of is the mothballing costs. So they estimated about $3,000 a month.
Yeah, just off the top there.
We have to verify that, but it could be more, it could be less. Whole system tied to the security system, we learned that. Then they asked also that the lower office that they have would house the person who's still finishing up their affairs until they're done. And then I just kind of put a list of the buildings down there because it's really quite a bit of real estate. So then the things that we need to address and talk about, and there may be even more because there's quite a number of them, are these. The visitor's center is currently run under contract by the CHP, given money, the $60,000 annually from TDC. And they're contracted to run at the end of 2009. This is -- we can also ask TDC if that's what they really intended. And as I mentioned to you, I think all of you yesterday, I have not been able to have my meeting with Linda Bell because of her father. So those are all things that I will talk to her about when we meet. And then my question is, you know, will anybody visit the visitor's center with the interiors that are closed? So is it worth having open? Which leads to, actually, the third point down below is that, again, I haven't heard this directly, but the county has said, I guess, to David Porter, that it may take, if they approve the destination visitor's center, about a year to do their retooling and their retrofitting. And again, I do not know what that means. So can all of the facilities be closed for a year? We don't know closure length, so that's the decision point. Then the backup to number two, it's the contents that we don't own. So what do we do with the contents? Ideally, it would all stay there to wait for the revisioning to occur, so that if we -- we, we meaning multiple partners, I think, at this point, wish to purchase some of those for the retooling, reconfiguring, that that could occur. But in the interim, CHP owns them, and if they need to pay bills, they likely might sell off some of the things in this entity. Could be the wagons, the big mobile pieces outside.
CHP indicated that, that they -- their revenue will not match all their expenditures. And so they're looking at what their assets are, that they might be able to sell, or need those obligations. So if there's anything there that we want, we need to think about whether we want to purchase that.
And that may be something that we can do in partnership, but it's so hard to know about that before plans develop. So again, do we want them to move it out? Do we want to store it? Who's got the liability for it? Those are all some of the pieces that need to be discussed. Then nextly, in my mind, there's no way to develop a process without hiring somebody. So we've got $36,000 a year already that we're going to need to do just for mothballing. And I think we need a contractor of some kind that will not only, you know, put the meetings together, but will facilitate the retooling. Again, this could be done in partnership with UCI. Just put down a few ideas of the thing that this staff person would need to do. But I -- we don't have anybody on our staff, our city staff this time, that can manage that. And I don't think any of us who volunteer really want to or have time to do that. I certainly don't. If I weren't doing this, I might, but. And then the last one, again, if it's a closed facility, we're responsible for everything down there. So how do we protect and monitor the site? I mean, how do we close it up?
Yeah.
I mean, it's a public place, and it's actually a public park and a parking lot. So we have some issues to deal with. So I thought it would be great for us to have some initial discussions because, especially on the funding issues, you need to begin to declare where your thinking is, because we need to know where your comfort level is in pursuing funding. And my -- as I see it from my vantage point, it's, again, I've mentioned the OCCIT funds, which are down about 70 percent probably because that's what we told Motel Jones. Our -- you don't want it down, actually, David, at our river shore. It's not down as far as the others.
Ours wasn't down too much.
Not down too much? Okay, yeah. I knew ours wasn't as bad as the others in the county. The tax is down.
Interrupting. So our OCCIT money is just from our motel? It's not from a percent out of the county?
No, we had a percent. We had 3 percent.
4 percent.
4 percent, yeah, totally. Okay. And so there's the possibility of using that. So if it's like it has been, it's $100,000, you know, we can take 50. We also then can partner -- I mean, we can ask for funding from the county and try to build a partnership somehow. But so, so we have those two bills to work on. The other pots of funding, I mean, if we hired a staff person, you know, then of course there are grants and foundations and all that kind of work to do. Or it could just be empty. It takes buildings down for it back into a city park. So we just have so many options, and I feel uncomfortable doing that here, because I think that it's a -- should be a broader discussion with way more practitioners and experts in the room. But we do have to key on the funding, because I'm not sure who will lead that effort. Done.
In terms of a consultant, we probably have to figure out whether we want a retool or not.
Right.
What the nature of it's going to be. I'm concerned about whether that facility is the best facility for storing some of those things. I've understood for -- I've understood that the Stevens Crawford house, their clothing that was up in the attic has been taken to this facility. And I'd be real -- those aren't our properties. But I don't want to store something in our facility that puts us -- I mean, so some of that stuff's going to be worked out.
Yeah.
If they don't belong to the cottage partners, they belong to, I don't know what anymore, but there were properties that existed before them. I won't -- we don't have a liability.
Yeah, I just made a note.
Yeah.
So then, Stevens Crawford items removed. Any -- what are the --
Well, so Doug, on the same note then, if the contents of those wagons are CHPs, what do we want? Why do we even want the liability of those?
No, I'm arguing that they are -- there are things in there.
Not provisioned buildings.
That don't -- I don't think belong to CHP, but they don't belong to us, we don't have liability should the clothing become moth eaten or something of that nature.
Okay, so reframing the question then, do we want to have responsibility for CHP's things? Do we want to have liability for CHP's things?
You mean make them, remove them, is what you're saying?
Well, I'm just asking. I'm just putting it out there. I'm just putting it out there.
It is.
Because we have to hire a security guard or whatever.
Yeah, that's one of the ones I put down here.
Yeah. And that's a hard question, because if that building's ever used, those items may be usable. But if CHP is abandoning the building, then they should get their stuff out at the same time. So that's a tough one, because the building is set up right now to be used in the future, but yet it's not our stuff. So I'm mixed on that one. Because part of me says if CHP is going to leave the building, then they need to take the stuff out of the building, and we figure out what we do with our building. But what are we going to do with it? Nothing in it. And so that's a tough one.
Yeah, and some of the solutions would likely want to use some of those things.
Yeah.
No, I don't know about all, but.
Right.
I mean, the move -- you know, I mentioned here, the movie in a -- in some people's ideas, the movie could be used as part of that destination visitor's center, because it's easy to get people in and out.
And then does that mean that we purchase those stuff?
That's right.
We get all that stuff from the city, and that's the money that they use to pay off?
Right. Well, that's the way it would work. Or that's maybe can make a case to the county, too. I mean, I don't know that I see broader partners than the state, than the county right now, though eventually the state, you know, could be involved, but.
So kind of, I don't know if it's the right spot, but can the chamber move down in there? If the county's going to continue its visitor's center down there, can we somehow make the chamber give them some space down there?
Or anybody else. But that would require moving out stuff. So, I mean.
I think more than the chamber, the reason, because in the heating costs of that facility is a lot more than what they heat their current facility. So you'd have to -- what I'm saying is, in order to make the work, I think you have to have more people in there to cover that utility cost.
And I think that that's a valid idea, to have some space, because whatever we decide, it needs an income stream.
Yeah.
Because we have ongoing maintenance there and issues.
Well, those two seem like a good partnering setup anyway.
I agree with you.
The office space that they're using, though, does have some limitations.
Don't even want it.
Well, there's, yeah.
It has some media issues, too.
Yeah, but the visitor's center doesn't take the whole building.
No.
It takes half.
So it's just, I'm just talking about office.
Yeah. They currently use it, which may not be what the chamber would use.
No, but there's some other little spaces there.
It's a colony.
Seven.
Yeah. Rocky.
That question, I think, too, has roped into several others. My concern about using the building, this building, kind of relates to my concerns about what we've talked about in the Carnegie -- with the Carnegie Center. Because here we have a city park that's essentially open to the public, and turning it into an office space is again taking, you know, open park space for a public building into a different use. And so I'm concerned by that. But yet we still need to do something with the building. And the other question, whether, will people visit the visitor's center if the EOT, the ICA is closed? And absolutely they will. They will. It's the most visible building in the city, and people pull off the freeway and go there. And I think regardless of whether it's closed, people are going to show up there. And because people out of state aren't going to know it's closed, and when they see that building, they go there. And -- And, and to me, you know, one of the concerns about the future is those hoops disappearing. It's that's one of the most recognizable icons in this entire state, and regardless of what that building's used for, when those disappear, a huge identity of the city disappears. It's like the elevator disappearing. It's, it's an icon and graphically and visually, and people know it when they see it. And, and so regardless of what's going on down there, visitors are going to go there. And, and so I, so there's part of me that thinks that that, that visitor's center needs to stay there in operation, and, and the addition of the chamber may be a, a part of that, but again, my concern is making it offices when it's a city park. But.
There's room for more.
But isn't, isn't the visitor's center an office?
It's a people place.
Well, why wouldn't the chamber, I mean, people come in, grab pamphlets, they check out the, but look at how much more display place they have.
There actually was some initial discussion, I think, when they're setting up the visitor's center, whether the chamber should manage it. The, it was the foundation at that time that, that took on the management. There had been some discussion. It's just that if they manage it, they've got to commit staff to running the visitor's center during.
Seven days a week.
Seven days a week. And so there's, you know, the chamber have to figure out.
Yeah.
The, the chamber have to figure out how they, they could do that, whether they could partner with us to do that, to pay perhaps some of the staff needs to do that, or whether in fact the TV, the money could be gone from the TDC to do that.
Because one of the things I had said was, well, why don't we move the, move the visitor's center up to the Carnegie or somewhere else? And the first thing someone said is, well, darn, RVs can't fit. So I abandoned that idea rather quickly.
It's got to be on, it's got to be.
I abandoned the idea, and I hadn't thought that one through, so, but I could see some synergy in, with the chamber there and not so much duplication and marketing. It, it could be really a productive relationship for tourism.
Yep.
And they're already paying rent, so they could pay.
And I think there's some other possibilities of things that would fit as a.
Art galleries?
Yeah. That would be people place. I mean, I, I can actually get very excited about the idea of a retooled center that's very much a people place, very much an activity center, that has multiple users, that's also a multi-use space. It could, it could almost be the town plaza. I mean, there's tons of room there. We used to have the Oregon Trail Pageant there with, you know, four thousand people. And.
And art fair.
Yeah, and the art fair, which is just, I love that, all of the space. So it's got tons of outdoor space, it's got tons of indoor space.
And possibly farmer's park.
Yeah. So it, it, but it does need something to do it. So I, I need to know what your tolerance is for funding and from us, because when I talk to the county, I'd like to kind of give them a flavor. I mean, I know we, we don't make decisions here, but give me an, you know, an idea of your thinking, because I haven't heard from anyone.
And I want to go back and talk about expanding the dialogue which you had mentioned earlier, Alice. Most of the discussion I've heard about the county typically zones them on the TDC, and I, I wonder if you might want to shift that discussion from this, this TDC to the Board of County Commissioners. I actually sent Nanita's report to Ann Lineiger, one of the commissioners, and she hadn't, she never got it. So none of the commissioners had seen it. I thought that was, I thought that was I. And they, last work session or a work session ago, I can't remember which, I had mentioned that, you know, a lot of the talk had been how the city has to lead on this, which I agree with, but I didn't think the city particularly had the capacity to deal with this on its own. And I, I really think the county is the crucial partnership.
Yeah.
And as far as a, like a steady funding source, I had mentioned, and I also sent that to Commissioner Lineiger.
Lineiger.
The, Lineiger. The text of the statute on heritage districts, that can be a countywide tax, which if spread countywide, wouldn't be that much, but I think that the county, these heritage sites in Oregon City, I think the interest group is well beyond the city limits of Oregon City. People come here, have spent, you know, dollars at hotels in the county, so I think the county has a crucial role to play. And imposing such a tax on the heritage district within Oregon City would, I think, be a good chunk of change for the citizens here if it distributed countywide. I don't think it would be that. And so what, if you want a specific proposal, I think we need to have, you know, a kind of howl like this explicitly with the, the County Board of Commissioners itself. I'm, I'm not sure that, I mean, obviously the TDC could be at the table, but I think as far as the authority to oppose a tax like that, I think the.
And they'll want that, yeah, they'll want that to come from the citizens. So I think the, the broad, the broad group really has to propose and work on that, because we've talked, I've talked with them about that. So they, yeah, they're, and they, and they may be willing to contribute some funding, but the TDC will likely take the lead because it's, it's basically in concept development as well.
Yeah. I was going to say, I wouldn't want to go to the county commissioners, and, and, I mean, I like the idea of heritage tax or a possibility of it, but I don't want to present the solution before we've analyzed this whole situation and, yeah, with everybody. So, I mean, it might be part of the solution.
So where are you on, on the facilitator?
Well, we need, we need.
Because we need to wait, we need to wait.
Let me see if I'm reading it the, the way. We need $36,000 annually, just, where would you assume that might come?
Do what?
Where would you assume that $36,000 will come? Any idea? We just got this this morning, so.
Well, you know, you mentioned OCCIT, it'd be a possibility that we could take that funding, probably be the, but that's going to give you a kind of a push point in terms of your grant funding.
Well, I want more than that because that doesn't pay for a facilitator.
Well, let me give you another thought too, as you move into the.
Can you share the facilitator?
Let me get that, but there needs to be a pool.
Let me get, let me give you this thought as you talk to the county, because there's, there's another side to the issue, and depending on what, what you want, this may be, you got, you got an elephant bull here, it's a question where you're going to spend it. I gave you a memo a while back in Wastewater that indicated all the things we had raised in discussion with Wastewater about the city need, which is actually a discussion between the county and the city about some revenue sharing that we've really failed, and the county needs to come to the table. The county doesn't have a lot of money either, and the minute that we spin this bullet, they're going to say, this is what we did for you. So the question is, is this where you're going to spend it or hire more facilities if you want to talk about it? I'll only say that because that's, this is going to get very complicated with that relationship.
Well, that, I, I agree with that. However, this is immediate and before us, and so.
But what the others are too, we just haven't.
I know, I know.
Got those on label.
Yeah, I think we've got some kind of possibility pools there, but, yeah.
Something they're reviewing, you know, what can we use on? It's in the, it's in the fifth district.
Oh, we can't pay for staff, no?
Well, you can.
Oh, but we could pay for the 30, the $3,000.
There is, and they own their own budget. This is identified facility.
It is.
And it is budgeted at $1 million. You don't have $1 million right now, you know? I mean, you've got a very tight budget in there.
Do we have $3,000 a month?
Well, it's how much you spend it for. Again, operations gets to be questionable.
That's more dicey than staff.
Facilities, upgrades, things of that nature, you could, you could do.
Because in my mind, it makes more sense, OCCIT is, you know, beds and, has in bed, uh, beds.
Beds and beds.
Beds and beds, buses seats. And so to me, it makes way more sense to have a facilitator come from OCCIT that's going to pull together the tourism pieces, because I still see it as a visitor site. It's a people site. It's a public, it's a public use site. And so to, again, I just don't see that we can move forward very far. Yeah, I can hold meetings and, and pull meetings together of, of partners, but.
Making money.
Nobody can do implementation without.
One of the things too that you might want to think about, I mean, right, but you've got to spend the money, make it, and this is where you might be able to draw some money. There are some things you could do there that could generate revenue. And so it's a question making that transition, keeping some of that stuff.
Like what?
Well, you have that whole room with the, the equipment in there for the movie.
Yeah, we can do that.
Well, I know. I mean, you're going to have tons of money to make. First, you got to buy the equipment.
Right.
You're going to have to have some staffing to do that. The question, it doesn't pay for it now for, for anyone.
It hasn't for them.
I know, I know. That's, but the question is, is there other things you could do that you might be able to generate using?
Well, I think that's got to be on the list that we look at.
I don't know what that is.
For sure. It's got to be, there's got to be revenue, some revenue generation as well as the theme or whatever we're going to do. Rocky.
Again, it's our building, and so I think there needs to be a broad discussion, but in the end, it's our building, and, and we have to figure out what we do with it. And I, I, it's our responsibility to deal with that building. And so I, you know, if we have to spend the money to mothball the building or whatever, that's fine, but it has to be, in my mind, very clear that if CHP leaves that building, they're done with that building. And it's our building. And I, so hiring, hiring a facilitator, I would not support at all if that means we're revisioning that site for the CHP, because that's not.
They clearly said today.
Once they leave that building.
No way, no way. They, they clearly said today, no way.
Okay. And so I don't, I don't want to see.
Right, no, so.
In that, if that's the case, then none of this money should be doing anything other than taking care of our building. Period. If the CHP is.
Are you opposed to having a facilitator?
Well, if the facilitator is revisioning what we're going to do with the building, that's fine.
Yes, yes, that's totally.
But, but, and what I, so what I'm saying is, none of this money needs to be to, you know, cross over to CHP in any way. I mean, if, if it's for revisioning for us as a city, and it's understood that this building doesn't go back to CHP, that we're running the building, then that's what needs to happen. You know?
The only, the only discussion that, that you might want to take in regards to the money that would go to CHP, if there's anything in there that you would.
The purchase.
Well, purchasing a movie or any of the things that.
We indicated today, we didn't see CHP in the picture.
Or they didn't see themselves.
But I'm really concerned about the items that are going to be in there that, you know, if something happens, then if we, you know, it's going to take time for us to do something with that building. So we're talking a year of just sitting there, if someone breaks into that building.
I'm concerned about that.
I mean, that's, that's a big issue.
The thing you could do that could generate some revenue, it would take, moving a lot of stuff out of that, is that could become forgettable space for our events and things of that nature.
Yeah. See, I like that on the short term, but again, I think we need to, we have to have a facilitator and a schedule.
Well, and the question too, is before we take those, what is your long-term vision about what we want to do?
Was it that's.
What is there today? Is there any piece of that from a city operation that we want to see resurrected? Because so, once you begin to kind of move that pieces around, it's going to be hard to get back.
I don't think we know.
That's what this process would do.
Yeah, I think it's, we have to have a process.
Before we figure out the short term.
I think that's what we're saying.
Yeah. I want to get a clarification. When you say facilitator, are you talking about someone?
Contractor.
This kind of discussion?
No, no, no.
Talking about an operations manager.
Yes, yes, yeah, essentially, that's the wrong, yeah, you're, that's a better. No, no, I'm sorry, yes, you're absolutely right, and I struggle with what word to use. Yeah, operations manager. Okay, we'll call him that. Yeah, no, I think it's a person, for instance, I had a discussion with Nanita because I think, you know, she, so, a contract, consultant, that did the report. Consultant that did the report, and I thought it would be a natural fit for her to perhaps take this to the next level and revision. And in conversation with her, though, she said, you know, well, I would need staff, you know. Well, right away, I thought, eh, we're not hiring two, so that the person that we need, and I think there may be a person out there unemployed right now, under, or underemployed.
Hey, I've got somebody in mind. I've got somebody in mind.
But that can, can do two things. That can bring groups together, and that can actually make whatever the vision is that's created happen. So, you know, it's the jack of all trades, operations manager, but also will, you know, would be in charge of the facility and reports to us, I guess. So anyway, that's just in my mind. I mean, I didn't figure out, couldn't think of any other way.
Well, so does this person help us figure out what our uses would be or potential?
Yes, yes. Yeah, see, there has to be someone to lead the discussion too.
Well, I agree, I agree, but I mean.
Someone has to even send out the email invitations, and, you know, we give them the long list to group to get together and send out the minutes and make the website.
Is that authorized by our, like staff?
Oh, yeah, yeah. What, is it? That's what he says, goosey.
We could probably stretch it to do something like that with staffing.
Could you check that for us?
Well.
Because, well, do we have funding that we can use?
Do we have staffing?
No, we have to hire. Yeah. No, no, it's not going to be someone we have to out.
Well, I kind of mentioned to you earlier today that, you know, we're at a point now where we should look at hiring a staff. You know, I've been holding off that because there's these big projects going, little stuff, you didn't need our staff to do that now.
Yeah, but I don't.
He goes to a DDA.
I don't think that person.
Well, that person do other things, but.
Well, it's all city now.
To do some of that stuff.
It's not.
I mean, that's what you're getting into. If you're just contracting to do this, you know, along with that question.
Doug left, that's mine.
Okay, let me just ask that one more time question, so I can stop harping if it's not going anywhere. Do you have any enthusiasm for continuing to discuss using some of the OCCIT money for something? Whether it's for a piece that might be matched with somebody else's for a new something or other? Or for a operations manager? I mean, I think.
Versus urban renewal?
No.
In addition to?
No, no, just at all. No, no, as, as a piece.
I would, I would be amenable to using OCCIT.
You would, okay. Yeah, and it's, it's the purpose.
What do we need to take this, how much do we need to take this first step to do now?
Well, in my minds, well, no, no, I don't think we know until after I have that discussion with the TDC, which you authorized me to do. I'd be difficult to go with me, but.
Yeah, if, if I know kind of what we're shooting for, I can, I can give you a better idea, but it was held not to.
Well, we know we need $36,000 from somewhere.
But that can't come from OCCIT, right? Because that's, it has, right.
I don't want, it does, in my mind, it doesn't come from there.
No, because of the building.
Yeah.
It's not.
Stop promoting.
It's not being used.
To me, the revisioning piece could easily, you know, the, the operations manager could come from OCCIT because.
It's not great tourism.
It's not great tourism.
I think the $36,000, since that, we own that facility, it's kind of number half, you could go and identify contingency in that. could go and get a fund contingency to that. And you could build that into your budget after we go through. I don't think that's a new program, that's making so what.
On a facility.
And you don't really have a choice because you're going to have to maintain.
Are you with OCC? With OCC, but my question is, are you willing to even explore that as an option?
Well, I think I've been really clear, it's our building. And if I know that we're doing it for to find out what we're going to do with the building, then I'm okay with that. But in that case, then I think we need to look at that building, find out what in that building is something that we want to use and the rest of it needs to get out.
Okay.
Because we have to know what's in that building and I I essentially think if if they're leaving that building, then they need to get this stuff out of the building.
Okay, let me propose some next steps then. May I have permission to continue the talks with the county so I can find out where the pieces are there?
Well, I just want to make sure that you mean by the county.
Okay.
I don't want to limit it to the DDC.
Yeah, okay, no, I will continue to talk to Lynn because we've got some other things to talk about that Larry mentioned, so I'll have that as a piece of the discussion, because we had an initial one. And then the and I will talk to Linda Bell because the TDC is working on this fit destination visitor thing, and I have no idea where that is. And then I will also discuss with her the visitor's center operations, you know, are they happy with the contract they have till the end of the year? If if this is correct, that they are going to take a year to retool, is a visitor's center open while they're retooling or are they closing to retool? And we just need to know some of those pieces. And then what else do we need to do right now? I guess Larry needs to kind of look to see what out of urban renewal, if there were an operations person and if you're looking at another thing. We need to get a letter, I think, from CHP to tell us definitively the close date and what they are taking, leaving.
And what we need to get a letter, have a want to.
Right. And that so if you can think of anything else, we need to run away. Because I don't I don't, I'd love to get a group together to talk, but I think without someone to.
So recapping, we're going to look at possibly a salary of somebody that can an operations type person that hopefully will be able to come out of urban renewal. We're going to.
Or OCC.
Or.
It depends on what we shoot for.
Or OCC, okay, so we're so then that means we're going to live with less grant money to give away next spring.
Yeah.
And which is, okay, fine. And then the 36,000 or whatever the expenses are, is it going to, we're going to find as soon as we button that up.
I think we need to get the proposals. And along the way, as any of us are having discussions, we may find a different pots of money. But I mean, I get we see the operations manager is writing grants as well or facilitator.
Didn't the tourism, was it last night was a meeting? Did you go to that, Rocky, on grants?
Yeah, two nights ago.
Two nights ago on grants?
It wasn't on grants.
No, I didn't, I was at the other.
But there was another one.
Oh, that's just the normal grant, you know, if you want to apply for grants, you can put that in and how to do it. That's they have that for the annual.
Can I just clarify one thing?
You may.
Okay, go back to what you were saying, Larry, about expenses or, because this letter, you know, implies that the mothballing money goes to CHP. I mean, that they're kind of asking us, well, if you give us money to deal with this mothballing, we could apply the Meyer Trust for $50,000. Now we're making.
No, no, we're not going.
They asked, that was in the letter about today, that's not what we discussed.
So again, we're not, none of this is going is connected with CHP and we're taking control of our billing and.
That's correct.